Great, well, good evening. We will call to order the meeting of the Rockport Select Board for Monday, July 12th. We do have everyone in attendance here and a few in the audience as well. Our first order of business before I turn it over is to welcome John officially. John Duke started with us on July 6th, so he's had a busy, very busy first week, but we are happy to have him here at the helm. So, John, I will turn it over to you for your Town Manager Report and update.
Oh, thank you. First of all, thank you to the board and everyone who reached out over the last few days, months. Since the news was announced, it's been an exciting and a bit of a whirlwind in the first week, but it's been great to have a chance to chat with everyone on the board and meet the department heads and meet so many town staff. It's been a really, an exciting kind of first week. So, it's been a great start. I presented the report here. Feel free to answer any questions you may have about that. We did have a couple items that came up. In between my drafting of this and sending it over in the packet, the Vesper Hill Foundation made a payment in lieu of taxes of $500 in recognition of town services. We've already drafted a letter and signed and thanked them for their generosity, obviously, in that effort. And I know there was a question about some questions about the sidewalks and some of the striping. In fact, today, Public Works Director Mike Young and I went out and drove. We drove and we drove. We saw all the great spots and all the spots that need attention. And obviously, a lot of striping concerns around town right now. For those who aren't familiar, there is a factory, it's part of the, when there was issues with the power grid in Texas, there was a fairly significant paint company that was, that creates the striping paint that we all use. And their issues created a nationwide shortage, jacking up the prices all over the place. So, striping paint is hard to come by when you can find it. When you do find it, it is incredibly expensive. So, that has not only seen the town of Rockport, but a number of communities, not just in Maine, but beyond, struggling to find those striping needs. The state actually sent out a letter to a number of different communities, to all the communities in the state, saying that they were going to limit areas in which they were striping to only major highways and areas of high need. So, some places that we're used to seeing the DOT trucks striping the side, you know, the roads, we won't see them this year as we see them in the past. So, we hope that that supply chain will free up at some point, and then we can get back to our regular cycle of making sure all these different areas from sidewalks to, you know, fog lines and the like are striped. But unfortunately, it's hard to come by right now. So, I know that was one area of concern. And the other, the last piece I have is that Eric submitted to us an email resigning from the Budget Committee. So, we want to thank Eric for his time as well. So, and that's not on the agenda because we don't yet have someone to fill that seat, obviously, but that's an addition to what's on the report here.
Okay. Any questions for John?
A question about the flags. Now that July 4th is passed, I wondered if we, routinely, they're not usually up all summer long, and some of them are, I worry about them getting sort of weather worn. And I don't know if that's on Public Works' plan to...
I don't know, but I'll find out. I'll let you all know. Absolutely. The flags are a very important piece for me, for anyone who knows my history. So, we'll make sure the flags are taken care of.
That's right, exactly.
Yes, and I don't want to be at odds with how the town typically handles it, but I think usually they, we keep them from, you know, Memorial Day, Flag Day, and July 4th, and then maybe...
Okay. Yeah, I'll find out what the past practice is and let you all know, where we're gonna go.
Great.
All right, anything else, John?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public input on non-agenda items? Hearing none. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? And John, are you, do you have Livestream up?
I don't right now, no.
Or Bruce, do you have Livestream up? I just wanted to see if there was any comments before we even moved far too long.
No comments.
Oh, no comments. Okay, perfect.
You know, I don't know, we don't know how long the Fire Chief's gonna be gone, but, I mean, I would offer up an opportunity for that position to go first. I mean, if you look at what's between here and the West Rockport Fire Station A2 Architect thing, it isn't that much, but, I mean, I would offer up 15 or 20 minutes earlier to get out if anybody else didn't have any.
Any concerns with moving that up in the agenda?
It's fine with me. It sounds like it might be a while for Jason.
Yeah, you know, just a thought, so.
Okay. All right. Well, let's go through, we'll get through Consent Agenda, and I know we have Marilyn here, so maybe we will do a couple of things to free up some time, and then we'll move into that. How does that sound? We'll be flexible tonight. All right, first, we have our Consent Agenda. John, any comments on that?
None, none above what was already in the packet.
Okay, so we do have a Rockport Homeowners United donated $132 for heating assistance to the General Assistance Count. We did send them a thank you letter. And as we discussed in our last meeting, Deborah Hall, who has served on the Midco Solid Waste Committee previously, her term expired when, her Select Board term expired, but she has willingly agreed to continue on, and that's very much appreciated. So, that will be a term ending June 30th of 2024. Do we have...
The Board approved the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
John, second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, we'll move ahead with that. All right, action items. We have two items for committee application, applications. David Cocke, who is an alternate, moving to a regular committee member. And Marilyn McWilliams is here, joining us for the Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee. So, we will first vote for David for alternate, or it's a regular member vacancy in the committee. Richard Remsen is requesting to move David Cocke from alternate to a regular member with the same term.
I move the Board appoint David Cocke from alternate to regular member of the Ordinance Review Committee, keeping the same term ending June 30, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Great, thank you. All right, and our next item is Marilyn McWilliams, who has joined us to the Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee as an alternate for a term ending June 30th. Marilyn, if you'd like to tell us a little bit about yourself, we would love to hear it. Come right up to the podium. Oh, sure. Don't be shy.
Pardon my walk, I tried to walk on air.
Yep.
He made it. Yeah, my name is Marilyn McWilliams. I'm a born Mayner, but have only lived in Rockport for the last, well, we moved in in October, just before the pandemic struck. We came from Portland. We were really, we've tried being city mice and country mice, and we like being country mice much, much better. So, so I'm ready to, you know, just jump into the, into the community. And one of the things that I'm, I'm on, I'm in the Garden Club in Rockport, and I've gained somehow a lot of confidence doing a lot of gardening over the last few years. I never would have guessed that I would have been that involved with soil and dirt and flowers, but I just love it. And so, when I heard that, you know, there was a possibility of the Parks and Beautification Committee needing some sort of help, and there was an alternate position open, I said, why not try for it? So, that's what I'm doing.
Wonderful.
Doug asked me if I knew how to use a shovel, and I said yes.
Well, great. Well, thank you. And we certainly welcome you to the town, and we certainly thank you for your interest in the multiple committees. So, thank you very much.
I'll just add that Marilyn, I know her from the Garden Club, and really just has jumped in with both feet, helping us on...
Be leery of Doug.
Great. Well, then, do we have a motion?
I move the Board appoint Marilyn McWilliams to the Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee as an alternate for a term ending June 30, 2023, to fill Amy Jenner's term.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Great, thank you. All right. Marilyn, you're welcome to stay, but we certainly understand you want to leave. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we do have some other action items which we are going to come back to. We are going to actually move our agenda forward a little bit so we can hear about West Rockport Fire Station. So, we will turn the time to you. And Jason, thank you. I know you are just coming from a call, so, thank you.
I am Amanda Austin from Two Way Architects. Thank you for the opportunity to update you all on where we stand with the fire station. We're, of course, talking about the West Rockport Station, the newly proposed station there. I have a few items in your packets. We had a display board and a rendering that sort of shows the status of where we are in design, a cost estimate, preliminary cost estimate. And then I have a couple other items for you, including a short-term schedule, taking us out to a decision to place this item on the ballot in, for your decision in August, to go to ballot in November, and then an overall project schedule, thinking further out to construction and finishing construction documents. So, since the last time we met with you as a board, we've been moving ahead on the building estimate, and that's been our main focus. And that included getting write-ups from our design team, working with Bill, who was also our civil engineer, myself, structural, mechanical, and plumbing, to provide information for that estimate. And then, after reviewing that, the team, Bill posted the time, and Jason and Bill Lane and I decided that we really needed to add some more information to that, including things like the antenna that's necessary for the building, communications equipment, AV equipment. And so, we took more time to get those items included the best we can at this point. And for that sort of second list of items, we worked with providers that work closely with the town already. So, Jeff Parker and Yankee Communications and people that you know well. And then, once those were gathered, we had our estimator, Joe Ricciardi, a local contractor. Some of you probably know Joe. He took another look at it, gave us the all-clear, and we sent it on to present to you. Jason, I believe, has also provided the members of the Building Committee the information at their disposal to review. And we haven't, I don't think, had any feedback from that so far. So, if we want to just start with the rendering, which is coming up on the screen here. So, this is a drawing we put together. You can see the site plan, the floor plan, and the various kind of zones around the building, back of house, the engine bay, and its ancillary spaces, and then the meeting room, and the site plan, and then the rendering showing it basically from the corner of 17 and 90, and how it would appear from that intersection. Our hope with this work was just to utilize this as kind of a display board for the town office or elsewhere, to let folks know what the building looks like, some of the critical features that have led us to this point in the design. You can see them, they are listed. It's very, it's, I think the color scheme on the exterior is preliminary. I mean, within our group, we, we like where it's headed, and it does reflect the design that was taken out of the comments we got from the Building Committee previously. We did a couple of minor design modifications to meet their goals for the aesthetic on the exterior. And I think you are probably well familiar with the floor plan, so I won't spend, and the site plan and generally how that works. We won't spend a lot of time going through that with you unless you have any questions. We're all here to answer them. Well, given that, unless there are any questions, we can talk about the estimate. We can move there. So, I always start a discussion on a preliminary estimate by reminding everyone that it is preliminary. It's based on early information. We're only barely really into the schematic design process. But again, we did have the help of our full team to come up with the information you have. And that estimate comes in at a total of 1.998, $548. Slightly different there, I'm not sure what the difference is. It's a slightly older version, but you can see that, that was just previous to an addition we did to add some additional buffer on the sign costs. So, we're at 1.998 now. So, what we have here in front of us, you can see, we've highlighted some items in yellow. That's that second group of items we went back to add, including a contingency at 7%. Just to, we do have some time when we get to the schedule between now and construction, and cost fluctuations, items that haven't been taken up into the budget so far. And we always advise, even after a construction bidding process, that the owner hold a contingency in there for unknown items. So, that's where we stand. I think, in sort of summarizing the estimate, site work is a solid total in that sort of subcategory of that work at about 18% of the budget. And then, the systems in this building are significant. We're talking about a heated slab, which is necessary to heat the space. We're talking about some snow melt just in front of the doors. Ventilation to the best standard we can get it. So, we have quite, there's a range hood because we have the need to have a kitchen in this building. So, there's some significant items there, and that's a big chunk of the budget, as well as electrical costs and sprinkler costs in this building as well. So, that comprises about 24% of the total budget in those systems. Again, we carried the contingency, and we worked on those other items that we discussed already. Are there any questions about the budget overall that I can try to answer for you?
Are we concerned about lumber prices in here?
We are concerned about them all the time. We have heard, actually, just in the last week, and I don't know, Bill, what you're hearing, but we're hearing that they're starting to stabilize.
Yeah.
So, this was done, though that portion of the estimate was done, gosh, I want to say it was probably May, by the time we got this back, maybe even a little sooner. And then, we continued our work on it. So, things have probably flattened out a little bit since then, from what we're hearing. And we've heard, again, anecdotally, I don't know, Bill, if you've heard, but we've heard they're starting to come down even. So, and, but those, those fluctuations happened across the estimate, according to Joe, when he was looking at this. It certainly wasn't just lumber.
No, but it was a 200% jump.
That was the extreme case.
I know it's come down. I was just curious. I mean, and this isn't obviously getting built tomorrow, so.
Yes, no, no.
So, they should be back to normal, hopefully, by...
And generally, when an estimator looks at a project this early, they're trying to build in a little contingency into most line items because they don't have the finer level of detail. They need to really put hard numbers on it. So, hopefully, there's some of that built into this as well, in addition to the contingency we added. So... One item we did want to bring your attention to was the audiovisual portion of the work. So, we, we looked at this, we, again, we worked with Jeff Parker quite closely on this. He took a very detailed look at the possibilities for this building, and, and provided us essentially three tiers of opportunity for this facility. The first of, and the one we included in here at 29-4, was a very, was a basic package that essentially serves the fire station's needs to communicate with via internet for training opportunities, to do some conference calling, that sort of thing. Pretty basic set of standards, but serves the fire station for their needs. The other tiers of that, that he looked at for us, were thinking about opportunities for this board, for other committees, to broadcast meetings from that facility. And so, the next tier, which you, you don't have all the backup numbers to, but I'll try to describe them for you, was the intermediate level, was sort of allowing for that streaming capability and broadcast capability, but meaning bringing some of that equipment to the building, not having it all installed there onsite. So, a level of inconvenience and a level of little bit of time and cost to broadcast the occasional meeting from there. And that came in around $46,000. So, that additional equipment is a fairly significant jump, 15, 15 grand or so. The full setup, cameras, microphones, additional speakers, the whole kit and caboodle that you need to really broadcast a meeting was $62,000. So, we presented, because this is a fire station estimate, we presented what was necessary for the fire station, and wanted to put that in front of you to say, what does the town see as their needs, larger needs potentially for this facility? Is there a need that could be met by increasing that particular line item in the budget? Again, we have a long ways to go. Those are items that can continue to evolve, but as a budget, we wanted to at least present that further opportunity for you all. I don't know if you have any thoughts about, you know, how you would see using that facility. The, the meeting room there is, has always been intended, the feedback we've been given, is it's always been intended to have meetings there. If the Garden Club or other committees wanted to meet there, or public groups wanted to meet there, great. The broadcast capability is another tier beyond where, what's needed even for that, so.
What's the internet like out there?
Well, that is a question we have not assessed yet. I think we need to do that.
Because we have fiber down here, which...
Yes, we do need to do that, to make, I think, to fully make that decision.
Spectrum.
Spectrum, yes.
Yeah, cable.
It's, it's decent most of the time.
I mean, I think if we were in a situation where we didn't have a room to broadcast, it'd be worth the investment, but I'm not sure from a nice-to-have perspective, it's worth the additional investment for that at this point, when there's so many other things.
Yes.
You know, I mean, in the grand scheme, if lumber came down, and we, and we had some additional money, absolutely. But, you know, I think, I think satisfying the basic needs for now, I'm surprised how expensive AV equipment is. I shouldn't be surprised. Everything's so expensive. But, I mean, I guess my, my perspective would be, let's get what we need, in the hopes that at some point, we could expand it.
Right.
Because we do have a great facility here, and we have, you know, additional meeting space, so.
Right.
Want to be mindful of expenses, if we can.
Yes, yeah. And we certainly, I think, and this, this building has certain AV needs in that we need monitors in the engine bay. We need to connect the, the sleeping rooms with phone and speaker access, so that if there's a call, those folks will know it. And Jason can use the PA system that's included in a separate line item to connect with any of those rooms. So, this building has a little bit more need than we might even see in some other commercial facilities, so.
I've had some folks ask me about the sleeping rooms. Could you explain a little bit more about how those are intended to be used?
That might be best for you.
As we've discussed over the last three years, EMS around here, it's had its ups and downs. I've, I've said for years, within the next five, eight years, the fire service, not just here in Rockport, but in the county's gonna change. There will be full-time fire departments, whether it's here and another department. We, we are not gaining any volunteers. The sleeping quarters are gonna go where if we have overnight shifts, if EMS moves in, if we move a single ambulance in. It gives the opportunity, right now, there's nowhere in the public safety building to sleep. The officers, as Mark knows, if they have to sleep, the only thing they can do is climb up the stairs above the fire trucks and sleep in the couch up there. So, we don't have adequate safe sleeping quarters for anyone, whether it's police or fire. If we happen to gain EMS in the next few years, that would give the opportunity, that's where the ambulance most likely would be stationed is out there. And it gives you, obviously, male, female. That's why there's two rooms there. There's two bathrooms, male, female. It gives you the opportunity to house somebody there if we have to get to that point. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when. We will have to change the fire service within the next 10 years easily. I'm losing three young kids in the next 30 days total that finished their firefighter school. One's going to college, one's in the service, and one's moving away that quickly. So, as quickly as you get somebody, you lose them. We have several gentlemen that have been in the apartment 45-plus years that are no longer doing certain things. So, we're getting to the point where decisions are gonna have to start being made. Again, not just here, Camden and all the other communities on what we're gonna do from a fire EMS standpoint. So, that's why we did this. We, we want this to be a super long-term building. I don't want to just build a building to build it, just to get us in there, and then, three years down the road, find we need more space for an ambulance or another truck or sleeping. So, we're looking at, you know, 50, 100-year building that will adequately hold what we would need in this town and other towns as well.
So, once you move away from a volunteer force, is that when, then, it's expected that there's sleeping quarters provided?
It absolutely could be that way, yes.
Okay.
I mean, we, there's different versions of it. I mean, Camden runs 12-hour shifts, but you don't know what we could do. And we, we don't know where we're gonna be.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle, I just wanted to make sure, I, I know Amanda was very clear. When we did the AV part of it, it was brought up to us, hey, do you want to add this? So, and I said, I wanted to make it very clear that the fire department only needs basic, but we wanted to get the option out there to you guys, that the board could decide if it's something that you wanted over there. So, I just, we definitely wanted to make that clear.
No concerns here. I, I like having the option. I think it's great that we know what those expenses would be. I just think, from my perspective, you know, if we were in a situation where we couldn't broadcast, that would be different. But I think our, our priority should be to make sure your needs, from a fire perspective, are met from an AV, and then, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with what we have.
Absolutely.
Already, so.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I wouldn't mind upgrading the AV system to the full boat. I mean, because it does provide an opportunity for us to, you know, service, if you will, West Rockport, even though they could drive here. At least, we could go there.
True.
So, that was one thought. A question for Amanda, I guess. I know the only contingency was 7%. Is the OP 10%? Is that what?
Yeah.
Is that what the estimate is above what might be needed, just to add a little, I hate to use the word fluff, but...
No, that is, so what you see below are numbers directly from subcontractors. The 10% is overhead and profit for the contractor.
All right. And their guestimates, I'm assuming, are perhaps a little higher than...
They try to be at this point, yes, because like I say...
And I say that because if they are higher, we could take the extra and put it into, you know, the system and make it.
Right, right.
And I know Amanda and the team have done a great job, that we will have chases built so that if we go with a basic package, and three years down the road, we need to do something, it's all gonna be set up, so it'll be easy to take the ceiling down. There'll be chases up there, and we'll be able to wire things in that way. So, we're pre-planning for, if that ever should come to fruition, that it'll be set up and ready to go.
And I suspect that we also could be in a position where if we found ourselves under budget, we could then say, excuse me, let's go with the, I mean, that's probably at the, at the later stage of building, correct?
Yes, exactly.
So, we could say, yes, we have the funds to be able to do it.
Yes, exactly.
How did you select the bidders for the contractors for this?
So, Joe selected those, people he's familiar with. He tried to stay as local as he could. Some of these are fairly specialty-type subcontractors. For instance, I know in particular on the painting, the epoxy floor that would be in the engine bay, he wanted to get someone experienced in looking at that. So, they aren't only from the local area, but they're people he's familiar with. So, he selected them. Yeah. And he didn't get, and this, again, at an early stage, it's typical not to get, say, three prices on every item, but he did get multiple prices on some of the more substantial ones. Yeah.
Okay, all right. I know, Amanda, we also received kind of the next, the next steps, and then the overall project.
Yep. Yeah, so I can walk through that. Everyone has a copy of that then? Great.
Yes.
So, we put together, well, Bill had given me the schedule of looking ahead to a November ballot, needing a decision from this group to have a decision to go to ballot by August 23rd, your August 23rd meeting. So, we've kind of worked backwards from that over the next six, seven weeks, whatever that is. So, in that schedule, we met with John last week to kind of update him on everything, and he'd been following emails before that, even before starting as well. We've put in here a couple of public meetings, thinking that one could be here, one could be at the station. I think one of the things you have in your packet are some images of what the building looks like, and some of the current condition issues. So, it might be helpful for people to see that, and, and also just to be able to stand with Chief Paisley and take a look at the flow of how the site works and the challenges, which is one of the major reasons that we're looking at this. So, those would be opportunities to meet with the public. Then, we can decide on the next couple of steps after that, meeting with the Building Committee to inform them, or at least communicating with them as to what the discussion, what focus on. And then, possibly even coming back to you to inform you all of the, what we found and what we heard, for those that may not attend those meetings. And then, making a decision whether to go to ballot in August. Probably backing up even a further step from that, early on... Early on in the process, we talked about two decision points in this process for the public. One of which being whether or not to proceed with the next step of design, which includes myself and the full design team working with us to complete the design drawings and the construction drawings and go to bid. And a second decision point at which we would have final contractor bids and that final number from them to say, this is how much the project costs based on a public bidding process. Do you want to move ahead? So I think that's, that process is up for grabs as well, but that's kind of how we've determined the schedule looking forward. And maybe with that in mind, it's helpful to look at the next document you have, which is an overall schedule. So that takes us forward from August, looking ahead to construction. So August twenty-third, we meet with you and you make your decision as to whether or not we move ahead from that point. August to November, assuming that you approve of this, we, August to November, spend time educating the public about what we're doing and the reasons for the building and the reasons for the preliminary estimate and so forth. Also included in this year's town budget was money for us to start to take on some tasks regarding preparation for planning board approval or presentation, rather. So um, we would like to have the site surveyed because some work has been done on it to make sure those existing conditions are matching the construction draw, or construction drawings for that previous project. Um, there would be time for Bill and I to work together a little bit, so some limited preparation is what we had planned on. Then we would have a decision point in, in November and assuming that everything is, it's decided to move ahead based on the public vote. Um, it takes some time to prepare for planning board. So we would, we've put in here from November until January, considering holidays, timing after the approval, all those things. Present to the board and submittal a few weeks ahead of any planning board meeting. Have that initial review in February, assuming two meetings are needed, which I think it's fair to assume on this project, that would be the case. Um, and then a final meeting in April. Moving ahead from there, six months to prepare construction drawings. And then a five-week contractor bidding process in November and December. Um, and we could choose when, if that's also the time we submit for building permit, um, to get that approval. So we're, as we all understand, that because of the timing before a vote, we're pushing this back because if the bidding isn't done until late next year of twenty twenty-two, then the next decision point is likely June, unless you tell us otherwise, but um, so then we would have a construction start in twenty-three, after that approval. So hopeful approval. Um, and then I think it's fair to assume anywhere from a ten to a twelve-month construction schedule on something of this size. I did look just at an alternate to that, to try to see if we could speed things up. Um, I think a few things that have to happen. Um, we would, if schedules allow, between Bill and I, have to prepare for planning board in advance of November. Um, so that we could have a planning board meeting in November and you can see then the schedule starts to jump forward a few months. Then assuming approval in November, move ahead and get the rest of the design team started probably in January. Possibly, I think it's uh, tight to say the least, but to have construction drawings and design drawings done in five months. And then, you know, so that's starting to get us into the July-August timeframe for bidding. But there we are, right again, against that wall of needing a decision point as soon as those numbers come back. Not a lot of time to pull things in or out, make sound decisions on those and educate anyone about that before your decision point. And then actually what happens then is you're talking about a November ballot, which means construction would be starting either in November when it's going to cost more and have more impacts to the overall project, or it's starting in the spring and you're ultimately not gaining anything on the backend. So to us, it made sense to take the proj, process more, to me anyway, and I haven't reviewed those thoughts with these guys, but to me, it made sense to stick with what you have here and have more public input, more of a, a public presentation process and better timing for decision points, critical decision points. And again, this assumes two decision points. It assumes people approve us moving ahead with the design and, and approving the final costs. Again, I, you know, Bill and Chief Peaslee have been clear with us all along the way that the intent is that everything is laid out, that people have the information they need to make a good, sound decision about the project, from its design to its costs, to what's included in the building overall. So that's the goal we're trying to achieve.
I think that's great.
So.
Um, question for you, John, if later in our discussion, we're talking about our meeting schedule. If we moved this to the first meeting in September, does that put us in danger of not being able to get it on the ballot for November?
I don't believe it would. I think we'd still be, the, the question would be when to order the question. So you could order the question as soon as, or the clerk to draft the question as soon as your next meeting, let's say you're meeting in August, and whether or not you ultimately approved a warrant or not and set that meeting in September. At least you've ordered the question drafted.
Okay.
So there's a, there's a way we could get there.
Okay.
Only because we may not have a meeting on this August twenty-third as you were originally thinking we would.
Yes, right.
So I just want to make sure if we don't, we don't put you, your project in any jeopardy, so it doesn't sound like that.
Great.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I had for you tonight. I'm happy to answer any other questions. Um, yeah.
So are all the costs of the um, planning board review and the getting the building permit, everything, is that included in what is budgeted now?
It is not included in the numbers you have in front of you right here. We presented those previously.
And is that what's included in our twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget?
That's a portion of it.
Okay.
Um, so what we had provided previously, and again, this was to, to Bill post, but um, looking ahead toward design development, construction drawings and a contractor bidding phase, we were looking at eighty-five thousand dollars for those next phases, for ourselves and a full team of engineers to get this thing drawn up and so then permits would be above that, but they are not that significant between a state fire marshal, a local building permit and a planning board permit. Those are small in comparison, certainly. And we can certainly add those numbers up based on current fees, certainly.
Further, Amanda, this board would have the ability to waive their, the fees for the town as well.
There you go, right. I think probably the state fire marshals are probably not more than a, I don't know, a few thousand dollars. So it's a pretty small percentage.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for all of your work. I know that the three of you have been working very hard, along with the building committee. So uh, we appreciate it and we look forward to having you back.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Alright, we will go back to our action items. Give these folks a few minutes to. Alright, our next um, action item, circling back to action items, is action item B. That's to act on the Opera House fee schedule. Uh, John, any comments on this new schedule or process?
Uh, no, a lot of the work on, on both the Opera House fee schedule and the Harbor Park uh, fee schedule, really a lot of that work took place before I came on board. Megan's here, certainly was involved in any of that, as well as Carrie, uh, Diane in the office. There was, it was a team effort, worked on a lot of this, um, and so, um, I'd certainly urge you to approve these.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I move the board approve the Opera House fee schedule as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous? Okay. Thank you. Our next item is the Marine Park Harbor rental fees. John, any comments on this?
Uh, no, I'll set it all at the first.
Okay.
They're, they're large increases, I guess.
They are. Yeah, they're much, much larger than, than certainly we handled with the Opera House fee schedules. I mean, I think the, the concern is that obviously the use and the, of that park is to rent that up for a full day is such a tremendous burden there for, for all involved. Uh, and, and also to fall within market of other public spaces. Um, if, there aren't many spaces like that. It's a special spot. Um, I was remarking to Megan the other day about, you know, seventeen years ago, yesterday, when I got married, we were trying to use the amphitheater in Camden and uh, unfortunately, they were, that was when they were doing the renovation over there. Uh, but the costs weren't all that different than what we're talking about on this space right here, so. I, I think this is about trying to, to account for the incredible disruption, not just to, to boaters, to the general public who's using that space, but uh, staff, time involved with it and, and the like. Um, trying to find a way to, to right-size the, the cost to uh, to what the impact is, is really what this is trying to do.
How much of a calling is it, do we know, or has Abby said or anyone said of, for the harbor, for the summer?
Oh, for, for use for this year?
For this year.
I don't know if I have that. Have you, have you talked with Abby about the use, Megan?
Uh, there was an event scheduled almost every weekend for like the last five weeks. Uh, and there's several in August. And I know from speaking with Abby, the harbor committee is concerned in the frequency that it's getting used, but we are also only charging six hundred dollars a day. So increasing these fees will also pare that back some as to how often it's rented.
Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking if there are some that are considering and have been in contact with Abby and the town and, you know, they're looking at August, September, October, you know, yeah, it's nice for six, but here we are, gonna jump it to, you know.
Well, anybody that has a contract that's signed already, their amounts wouldn't change, cause they've already locked into that number. Um, this is really, we wanted to get this in front of you now because that now is when people are scheduling next summer's events. So it made sense to uh, have you guys approve these amounts now, first waiting until winter this winter when the events were already planned for the summer.
So this only goes into effect next year then?
This will go in effect as of the time that you approve it, so any events that are scheduled and on the books already, their amounts won't change.
Any new, any new events?
How much is this gonna, I mean, a three thousand dollar event gonna scare somebody off versus, you know, making it two thousand, which is still a substantial increase?
Well, you can scare four people off as long as that fifth person.
No, you're absolutely right. I mean, it's, you know.
So people who have already scheduled it, you'll inform them of the new increase?
People that have already scheduled, already have a signed contract, so they know what their amount is going to be. So they will adjust the contract going forward and anybody that signs a contract from this date forward, if these amounts are approved, will then follow under these contract amounts.
I mean, I, you know, I'm gonna get back to, it's a, it's a pretty steep increase. And I was, and the sort of the numbers that I had written down here as a alternative perhaps would be two thousand for the resident and four thousand for the non-resident, which is um, still a pretty steep increase. You're still getting more. You know, with the, the next one down, instead of fifteen hundred and twenty-four hundred, I put a thousand fifteen hundred. You know, if we see that we're, you know, I don't know, I just don't wanna, you know, price this out of a.
I don't, what does the Camden Henson Theater charge?
I don't know what the current rates are, no.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, these come from some cumulative brain trust somewhere.
All the brains.
So what we looked at is other facilities that people uh, rent. Whether it's land and they put up a tent, or it's an actual like formal facility that people go to. Uh, a lot of the events that have happened down there are um, higher caliber events. Uh, we've had people bring in trailers that have functioning household toilets on them. Um, they're bringing in uh, top-end caterers, so it's not, we're looking at what the overall impact is to the Rockport resident that wants to go to the harbor and use it for the day. Um, we didn't really increase the three-hour rentals with no tents all that much because the impact is minimal. You don't have a big tent that's taking up fifty percent or more of the Harbor Park. It's gonna be a small event at a few picnic tables, maybe. Um, but those big tents that are up for the weekend really uh, di- disrupt the whole area in terms of doing anything else down there.
Any numbers on how many of these events that are booked are Rockport residents?
I don't know.
I mean, cause I, I mean, I think I am, I'm with Mark too. I, if, if I were gonna lean in, I'd lean in on the resident fee.
As I understand from Drew with the Opera House, in the old days, everybody ends up being a Rockport resident.
They do find a way to.
Then they just have someone do it, yeah. Good point. Um, other thoughts on those rates?
I guess, I, I support this, not that I'm trying to price out Rockport residents, but I do think we have a stunning facility down there.
Absolutely.
And we, we should get our, the, the residence money's worth.
No, and, and I agree, I just was.
And honestly, if you only schedule one event down there for the summer, at these rates, you're gonna make, you're gonna have a higher income than if you have ten events down there at this rate now.
And meanwhile, the public gets to enjoy the park.
And to your point, I mean, if you, you know, we've all been to weddings at other facilities, we all know that they are very costly to rent and come with nothing, so, you know, we, and we have a beautiful facility, beautiful view.
And we provide bathrooms, like they don't have to bring in their own. We provide those, we provide the power. We provide the trash removal, all of that's included in these amounts. So it's a lot more than if you go somewhere else.
I move the board approve the Marine Park Harbor rental rates as presented.
Second.
Not that we've already had our discussion.
Any, any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Okay.
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you, Megan. Okay. Um, our next item is to act on an McKed representative. Um, so they're currently looking for someone to replace Bill Chapman on the General Assembly and the Board of Directors. Um, Bill has been on the General Assembly since he was a Rockport Select Board member, so thank you, Bill, for your continued service. Denise has volunteered to take Bill's place on the General Assembly and Board of Directors. That's right. And then, so we'll need to make sure Bill's aware and that we uh, make sure that McKed is also notified. Do we have a motion for that?
I move the board appoint Denise Munger, McKed representative, to replace Bill Chapman on the General Assembly and McKed Board of Directors.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Is um, is this something that normally doesn't come with an expiration or a term, or you're just there?
We even knew we had this position.
Yeah. I, I knew Bill was on it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there's a term expiry on this, on this appointment. It's like the Supreme Court, I think.
Once you're on, you're forever, for life, life's ever.
We got somebody, I mean, anybody.
Better pay.
That's right, that's right. Alright, any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? I think you can vote, I think you can vote for yourself. Alright, our next item is to act on budget committee members. So we discussed uh, previously about our November, November election. We had two interested um, individuals and we have contacted Jared Cronkite and Jared is willing to fill this term. He was previously on the committee and his term expired June thirtieth. Do we have a motion for?
Move the board appoint Jared Cronkite to the Budget Committee to finish out Robert Duke's term for two years, ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Very glad he's willing to do that.
Thank you, Jared.
Yes.
Okay, our next item is an um, action item for an application for a food cart to be located at the harbor. Um, there is a map in here that uh, identifies where that location will be. It has been reviewed by the code enforcement officer prior to our review.
I move the board approve the peddler's permit for Must Be Nice Food Court to be at Rockport Harbor.
Second.
Any discussion?
As a matter of fact, there is.
Okay.
Yeah, um, have the, the. Yeah, um, have they, their state licenses?
Yes.
It says they'll have them by there, but do we, do we have them in our hot little hands?
Don't have them in our hot little hands, and so I would, I guess I would amend the suggested motion to.
I don't, I don't mind approving it, but I don't wanna let them get down and start doing things.
Subject to the having the state licensing.
Exactly, right. Uh, Scott's out the next two weeks, so we'll be, we'll be working on this in, in, in due speed, but we'll, uh.
Okay.
You're it, tag. Exactly.
And the motion, I move the board approve the peddler's permit for must-be-nice food cart to be at Rockport Harbor, subject to the condition that the food truck have all required, uh, licenses.
Second that.
Okay.
So I think this is Scotty down there. You know, they, they're sort of expanding. It's from our lobster doc.
Any further discussion? Right, all in favor of the amended? Okay, great. Looking forward to a lobster rule down there. All right, next item is our Act on our Sewer Extension Project Bond Approval, authorizing the issuance of a general obligation bonds and notes in anticipation thereof in the amount not to exceed four point five million. Um, John, anything that you want to?
This incredibly long motion, uh, is what is required for the board.
Do we have to read this?
Yes. That was what the jug of water was for. I'll tell you what, it would also take turns. But this effectively allows us to, to take on that short-term borrowing for, for this sewer project. Not much more to it than that. Obviously, there's digging going on and blasting and, and pipe being run, so the sooner the better.
I'd be happy to read it, but I also don't wanna.
Hey, whoever wants to, whoever wants to start, we're ready.
I move the board approve the Sewer Extension Bond Project, which authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds and notes in anticipation thereof in an amount not to exceed four point five million dollars. The SRF bonds and A, the Treasurer of the Town and Chairman of the Select Board, B, and hereby are authorized to borrow an aggregate principal amount not to exceed four and a half, four point five million dollars through the Maine Municipal Bond Bank's State Revolving Fund Program, including interim funding in anticipation of permanent funding, the proceeds of which shall be used to fulfill the approval by the Town Meeting on June eleventh and twelve of twenty nineteen in Article Ten, which stated, "Shall the Town, one, approve the design, site preparation, and construction of a sewer line extension from Sea Light Lane to South Street along Route One, including all other expenses reasonably related thereto. Two, appropriate, appropriate the sum of four point five million dollars as funds for the cost of the project to be funded through general obligation bonds. And, three, authorize the Select Board to issue at one time or from time to time general obligation securities of the Town of Rockport, Maine, including future refunding obligations in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed four point five million dollars. B, pursuant to the Town of Rockport Charter and Thirty A MRS Section five seven seven two as amended and all other authority thereto enabling, in order to evidence such loan and to accomplish the borrowing authorized above, the Select Board hereby authorizes and approves issuance of the SRF bonds in an amount not to exceed four point five million dollars, which SRF bonds shall be general obligation bonds and approves the execution of loan agreements, notes, bonds, and other certifications related thereto. And C, the Treasurer and Chairman of the Select Board shall determine the date, maturities, denominations, interest rate or rates, and be in such form and contain such other terms and provisions as they shall approve such approval to be conclusively evidenced by their execution thereof. And D, the Treasurer and the Chairman of the Select Board, B, and hereby are individually authorized and empowered to execute all reasonable and necessary transaction documents with respect to issuance of the SRF bonds, including loan agreements, notes and bonds, and other certifications and documentation related thereto, and to do all such acts and things as being, as may be necessary or advisable to carry out the provisions of this vote in connection with the execution, sale, and delivery of the SRF bonds, which transaction documents shall be in such form and contain such terms and conditions not inconsistent herewith, as may be approved by the officer executing the same, such approval to be conclusively evidenced by his execution thereof. And E, if the Treasurer, Chairman of the Select Board, or clerk are for any reason unavailable to approve and execute the SRF bonds or any of the related bond or transaction documents, the person or persons then acting in any such capacity, whether as an assistant, a deputy, or otherwise, is authorized to act for such official with the same force and effect as if such official had himself slash herself perfor- performed such act. And F, all actions heretofore taken by the municipal officers of the town relating to the issuance of the SRF bonds, B, and hereby are ratified, approved, and confirmed.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sounds like the easy way.
All right, all in favor? Denise, bless you.
Somebody's gotta change the legislation that we're trying to.
You know, sort of, sort of to dovetail off of one sewer project and potentially another one. Uh, there's been some interest from some Route ninety businesses. Whether we had any interest in running the sewer over, uh, from where it stops over towards the intersection of seventeen and ninety. The plans have been done. They're setting someplace in Scotts or, they were probably twenty years ago. And if the project would have been done then, uh, according to Scott, I think it was, it would have been a million dollars. And so the plans are done. So now it's just up to us somewhere down the road to think of, is, is there any interest? Or should there be any interest on our part? And here we are putting a brand-new building in over there.
Right.
And that's two years down the road, so we've got, we've got some time to, to look at this and consider it.
And I'd be curious, because there were so many different grants coming into the four and a half mil-, I mean, what does the final out-of-pocket expense end up being for us?
Megan, do you know?
Go ahead.
So, uh, with the approval of the ARP funds, I got a call from DEP a couple of weeks ago saying that we had applied for a grant when we started this project, uh, through their SRF program. We did not qualify because we didn't meet their qualif-, their standards. Uh, they revisited those standards when the ARP funds, uh, were delivered to the state. And when they revisited those, we then became eligible for grant funding. Uh, with that, we are eligible for a million dollars, uh, which will be awarded to us. However, we don't have a timeframe as to when that will be awarded and when we'll receive the funds, which is why we're still doing the temporary financing for four and a half million. So that reduces us to three and a half million right there. Uh, we applied for a grant through EDA, which was for two million dollars. Because of the pandemic, they have a backlog. Uh, we are hoping to hear by the end of this month, the first of the next month, whether we have been approved for that grant funding at, at what level. Uh, the two million was just shy of fifty percent, which is their max contribution. So my guess is, is that we'll receive somewhere between two million and a million dollars from them, hopefully. So then that puts us down to two and a half million to one and a half million by the time we do our permanent financing. And then onto his subject about Route ninety. We have three hundred and something thousand dollars coming to the town for ARP funds, which can be directed to sewer. The plans that were done are ten years old, so they will need to be updated as the scenery on Route ninety has changed. Um, as well as we'll have to do test borings and stuff like that to test for ledge. Uh, so there is more work that has to go into those plans, uh, to have something that's dig-ready. Uh, so if you wanted, that is a project that you could use those ARP funds for.
If I remember, I mean, I think at least ten, maybe closer to fifteen, but they, they had even where the pump stations were gonna be next to Jeff's vacuum, I think. There's a piece of property that we own, I think, there. Um, so it was pretty well-done back then, so it wouldn't take a lot to, to dust it off and see if there's an interest of the people that live along there, so.
And my understanding is that there is a development plan for workforce housing, uh, behind MRC, uh, that is ready to go as well, should we extend sewer out Route ninety.
And of course, you know, Richard Remsen wants to do his, that would help. I mean, I.
We should definitely look into this.
It's a consideration for us to look at, right.
Yeah, with this kind of federal money available.
Yeah.
Now's the time to do it.
That's the time, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Megan. Okay, we will move on to the Select Board Remote Participation Policy. So John, I'm gonna turn that over to you.
Yes, so, uh, as you all know, since we're all looking each other in the face, artful faces, uh. So as, as you know, the governor ended the state of emergency on June thirtieth. Shortly thereafter, um, with the ending of that, obviously ends the ability for municipal governments and, and other public entities to meet publicly, i- i- or meet publicly via electronic means. Or I should say, that ends as of July thirtieth. Uh, there was also a, a bill, uh, a law that was passed, was LD thirty-two, which effectively establishes a statute that governs how remote, um, remote, how entities can meet remotely. And it's very strict, and frankly, it's not great. Uh, it's, it's not probably what MMA would have wanted. It's probably not what the six of us sitting here would probably would have wanted, but it's the state law, so here we are. So the, the proposed policy effectively mirrors, uh, what the law is asking. Uh, it allows for individuals to participate remotely, though there are technical aspects of that which we're not yet ready for. Uh, Megan and I met with Jeff Parker early last week, and we have a pathway, I believe, to get us, get us and all town boards and committees to be in that capacity where we can meet, uh, remotely and involve any one of you, uh, remotely via Zoom. There are some issues with that, but there is a, there is a pathway to get there. But it, but to do so, it would require this board, the Select Board, to adopt its own policy. Further, and, and not to go too far beyond what we're talking about here, which is really just your Select Board's policy for remote participation. Each and every board and committee that wishes to meet remotely in any aspect, one member or the full membership in an emergency situation would also need to follow and adopt its own policy for that. And in doing so, they would also, as you would potentially, if you wish to pursue this, would need to hold a public hearing prior to your adoption of this policy. So there's a potential, then pointing back to this group, if you wish to pursue this, we would need to schedule a public hearing and invite, you know, the public. Um, and after that public hearing, after you've heard the public's feelings, you would have the ability to adopt. If, but then we'll be back to the rest of the boards and committees. If the rest of the boards and committees wish to do that, we would either, likely, we would try to have, schedule one large public, public hearing of every, you know, committee and board we've ever heard of. As long as we could have a quorum of them present, then it would be considered their meeting, and we could, we could move forward. That's, that's one way to, to move through this. But again, I, I think the best way they should have is just allow the municipal officers to set that policy for the entire community, but we don't have that authority, so unfortunately, this is the best we have.
And they wouldn't, each committee wouldn't come up with their own policy. They would have to mirror this one, I think.
Yes, exactly. And you wouldn't want them to. I think you'd want everyone to follow the same.
This is the LD thirty-two.
Exactly, yeah. And this was, uh, the draft we have, uh, here is, is almost word for word from what Bernstein Sher provided us with. There were some, there were some little bits that, that MMA, uh, sprinkled in for their own version, but this, the layout of this was far better than the MMA version, and so that's why we went forward using Bernstein Sher's, uh, thoughts.
And then it looks like for us, we might also consider revising our bylaws?
Yes, yeah, exactly. So there, there is a section in your bylaws that concerns membership and what, what constitutes a member present. And so I would probably suggest that if you wish to pursue this, that we'd come back and have some, some, maybe some language that simply says a member present is also in consistency with, you know, this remote participation policy. Uh, the only other piece that I, I, we didn't jump into, but you may want to think about, is the idea of some policies, and the MMA policy in particular did this. They allowed for, if the membership, for example, let's say John, for example, was, um, you know, who knows where, um. The, if, for example, let's say the internet wasn't so great, and you weren't sure if he was a member in good standing because the internet keep cutting in and out, providing you with the opportunity to say, okay, is, with two-thirds, you know, membership of the board present, we're, I'm sorry, John, but we're hearing every other word. We're not sure you should be able to vote on this matter. Because if we say you're present and you have the ability to vote, that gives you as equal weight as every other member of the board, and perhaps those present should have some ability perhaps to say, well, I'm sorry, John, your internet's not great. The four of us can hear everyone and, and be participating in that conversation. So I, I think that might be something that perhaps you, you use this and see how that goes. But that's one thing that I was thinking about, that as you go through this, you may ultimately say, well, there's some technological, you know, challenges that, um, that those, uh, the wise folks in Augusta weren't thinking through and giving, uh, this board and other boards that authority. So I, I think that's maybe down the road, but I think the policy's a good starting point. Allows you to jump off with, with something that, uh, you can re-, work from, from a policy aspect. The technical aspect still, as I said, that's, that's something we're working on.
So if, if we had a Select Board meeting scheduled and there was a blizzard.
Right.
And we could all be at home doing Zoom like we already know how to do.
Right.
Does this allow that?
Does this allow that?
Right, so there's a number, let's see. On, um, let me see if I can find the exact. I think it's, I, I guess it would be, uh, on number, number, uh, on number one B.
B.
Uh, yeah, they're expect, members of the body are expected to be physically present for meetings, except when not practicable, such as in the case of emergency or urgent issue that requires the body to meet via remote means, or illness or temporary absence of a member causes significant difficulty traveling to the meeting location. So if there was an emergent issue, um, you know, something, you know, this building was flooded and we were unable to meet remotely, or, you know, the ice storm, for example. You know, that, that's a situation where I think you can go into those needs. But it's really up to the board to make that determination as to whether or not that's an emergent situation, you know?
Yeah, I just would want, because I, I think the Zoom meetings worked pretty well. And I get that we wanna do public meetings when we can, but also, um.
We know what can be done and can be done successfully, so, great. So what is our next step with this? Like, what do we, what do we, as a board, have to do? And then what do we have to do regarding our committees to determine if it's something that we want or they want to do?
So the next, the next step would be to schedule a public hearing of, and then the next question would be for this board to determine, is that something they wish for themselves to pursue? Or is that something we wish to perhaps offer on a broader basis to all boards and committees? We could reach out to all those boards and committees and, and simply say, you know, we're going to hold this public hearing. Here is the policy that the Select Board will be considering. We would expect that if you wish to hold pu- remote meetings, you would need to adopt something similar. You would need to have a quorum present, and this is the policy which, which you would use.
And they could do it at the same public meeting that we have.
Yeah, we just, you know, I'll go upstairs and we'd have three members from the Parks Committee and three mo- folks from the, uh, the Rec Committee and, and, you know.
Let's serve hot dogs.
So might, might I suggest that Diane or someone, um, take this policy and email it to the chairs of all the committees and explain the fact that we are intending to hold a public meeting? And, uh, we'd like to have their participation, should they so choose to do remote meetings. But they'll need to have a quorum there.
Right.
And that's, that's gonna be the kicker, because we're gonna have a, a lot of, we're gonna have a lot of people.
Yes.
So maybe that's just, you know, Group A comes, you know, A, B, and C comes one meeting, and then the next ones come the other. But, um, yeah, and that way we'll have an idea whether we wanna do it. They'll have it to read ahead of time, and they can chew it over at their next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, at least the committees I'm involved with, I think this will be hugely popular because it allowed us, we had quorums when we had difficulties getting.
The conservation have had, we've had people in Florida in the wintertime.
Yeah.
And they've called and we've had their input and, so yeah, I think it would be useful.
Okay. I'm writing that down on our note to Diane. Okay.
So that means that, well, and we're not really seriously, we don't, we wanna do them in person as long as we can. I'm thinking about like our August meeting, I mean, we're gonna do it in person anyway, so we don't need the policy to be done.
Right, because we'll do that in person, right.
And the one, maybe the one thing I would a- add to that, the, because the state, that, that, you know, the la- the allowance, I suppose, after the, the emergency, uh, the state of emergency, uh, that allowance ends on July thirtieth. So for example, our Economic Development Committee was going to meet via Zoom last week, and unfortunately, they were unable to do so because of a number of different conflicts. But, so after July thirtieth, we won't.
They won't be able to.
They cannot.
Yeah.
Yeah, they cannot.
And that is a group that probably will not be able to do unless we can figure this out.
And we get a policy together, yeah.
Exactly.
So we should try to get that out and scheduled sooner than later.
Yep.
Um, so that we can start those discussions.
Sounds great.
Okay, um, last discussion item is monthly Select Board meetings. So I know we've talked about it a little bit, um, when we did our bylaws. We also made note of going back to one meeting a month. I know from your staff's perspective, it is very labor-intensive to do two meetings a month. Um, any other thoughts on that? I mean?
No, I, I, I think it's, certainly there are single-issue items that will crop up and pop up, um, as we were talking about the other day. There's, there's certain items and workshops that I think are very valuable for you to, to, to zero in on and, on an, on an odd night or, or, uh, the like. But, but the layout of our, our agenda and the way that the five of you work, and at least in the last couple of years, the, the Select Board has worked, it's a very, uh, somewhat rigid but very efficient operation. But there's a lot of work that goes into that efficiency.
Absolutely.
You know, and so I, I mean, it's, it's impressive. What comes out of that office is impressive. Um, and I won't say it's because of me, because I've been there five days, but it, this is, there's a lot of work that goes into making this happen, and I think that it provides staff with the time to do all the other things that we needed to do, to make sure that the town is running efficiently, you know, a- and, and well. And there's, there's, um, unfortunately, there's a bit of, 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 of work that goes into, no matter how long the meeting is, whether it's twice a month or, or once a month, that you're going to have regardless, that, you know, to put the packets together. What's fifteen pages versus fifty? You know, there really isn't much of a difference in terms of staff time.
Somebody has to stock these things in the right ca-
Exactly, but it's, but it's wildly efficient, and it works well, you know?
Yeah.
So I, I would say, I, 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 I'm very much in favor of this, certainly understanding that when items crop up and pop up, ha- having regular dialogue and communication with the five of you, so you know what's happening, you know what's going on, and, and certainly know that my phone is always available, you know where my off, my door is always open. Um, and this isn't about having, you know, not having me here. It's more of a question of trying to make sure it's efficient for everyone's times.
Well, and with this remote policy, then that way, when one of those one, single-issue things crops up that would otherwise require a full-on meeting.
Right.
True, yes.
It's a good point.
Yeah, that's true.
How does, um, how does everybody else, I mean, in, in an effort to sort of streamline our time, you know, which our time is the people's time, but how does people, how do people feel about having a workshop the same night as a board meeting? I mean, that we, you're, again, you're one night, you know, it's a little bit longer night, but you're not, because we could, I mean, we know that those board meetings are on certain nights every month.
Yep.
And if we have to have a workshop, then you add an hour at the beginning or the end or whatever, but it's still that one night a, a month.
So maybe make it just a regular workshop slash evening if we have to go to another one, that's what you're saying?
Well, you'd have it on, you, your regular board meeting, but you'd have the workshop before or after.
So your monthly board meeting would then have a workshop now?
Yeah.
If needed, yeah.
If needed, I mean, not.
Just so you're maximizing that day versus doing a meeting and then another workshop.
Because when, when you try to s- take five people and get schedules going.
Right.
And, but you know that that Select Board meeting is that night every month. It just makes it easier and.
True, agreed.
Yeah, agreed.
But, you know.
I think we've been trying to do that, right?
Is it worth trying to keep like the second meeting, what has been used as the second meeting? It's just if we need a workshop, it's gonna be that day by default for that month?
Yeah, I mean, I think from a schedule perspective, the way it's written and it's in the bylaws, I think it's, it's your second week is your meeting, your fourth week is reserved for those, if you need a meeting or if you have those special occasions. So I think from a calendar perspective, we should still keep that out there, um.
And we don't have that many workshops that.
That we need to, right.
So that's fine with me, I just wanted to try to, again, try to shrink or minimize the.
So, um, any concern if we move to one meeting a month, keeping the second Monday of the month as our primary meeting? Sounds good. Um, as a note to that, so our, so technically then our next meeting would be August ninth. Um, in today, um, there is the, the table of transition issues. So this is the transition document that, uh, went from Bill to John. What we would like to do, um, either before that meeting, after that meeting, or however we determine time, is we'd like to do the goal-setting workshop on the ninth. Um, we have to do that by the end of August, so we might as well get it taken care of. And I thought we could look through these of Ash John, I mean, obviously, he's looking at them every day, um, and really use these kind of as the springboard to what those three or four goals will be. Um, you know, I think we can use Bill's goals too from last year, do we, I'm sure Diane or someone.
I'm sure she has.
We've got a copy of them somewhere.
Yeah.
Um, we can use those to make sure if there's anything else that had carryover, um, but I think this would be.
Yeah, I think there was pretty much only one that I remember, and that was the review of.
Of parks.
The highway.
Highway, yes, sorry.
Or efficiencies.
Yep.
I mean, the other things, I think the, the pay question and the, uh, job descriptions finally get done. And there was probably another one or two, but I think the, the big one that was left is, is the highway one.
Yeah, and I think this will be a good, um, a good list for us to start with. There's some very meaty and important things on here, um, so we should be prepared for that for August ninth. Um, and we can make the determination as we get closer if we do it before or we do it after the meeting.
True.
But we'll get that taken care of there. All right, anything else on, um, Select Board meetings? All right, does anyone have any liaison reports, um, that they want to give tonight?
I do, for Parks Committee, wanna give a shout-out to an amazing committee, that library landscaping. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go by.
Beautiful, it's beautiful.
And people really have brought their shovels and just dug and moved mulch, and it's, um, it's, it's been a great effort. Um, and the goal is, we're going to have a big, um, dedication of the library on July thirty-first, so we're trying to get everything really as pretty as it can be by then. Um, concert series, last, um, Sunday night, we had over ninety people there.
Oh, wow.
Just a packed group, finally getting some of the publicity out on that.
Yep, good.
Really good, good turnout of our community residents. Um, and the community garden is still going, so, um, just lots of great initiative by our town residents on the Parks Committee. Uh, ZBA, quick one, you probably, I don't know if you're reading the paper, but the, uh, the ZBA did yeoman's work, I mean, again, that's another great committee. Uh, they ended up denying the appeal of the building permit for the hotel. Uh, the court had a hearing today, I don't know, we haven't heard anything on what came of that. I think that was more about procedurally, what are the next steps? Um, so I'm sure we'll hear from Dan, uh, sometime this week. Uh, let's see, ORC met and approved some housekeeping land use ordinance questions. That'll be on the November ballot, but it wa- they were already done, and we thought, let's just vote on them and get them ready to move forward, not wait for the deadlines for the ballot. Uh, and the other committees, uh, broadband, lots of stuff going on with the broadband initiative. We've got the, um, Midcoast Internet Development Corporation, of which Rockport is a charter member, all formed up and filed with the Secretary of State, uh, working on some lobbying work. Uh, Senator Collins has sort of, there's a big push, none of which, none of us understood this, but the, um, the bipartisan group for the interest, infrastructure bill in Congress, apparently, it's sort of a Republican plank that they do not approve of municipal broadband. In fact, wanna outlaw it. Um, so we have reached out, the sixteen different community broadband organizations in the state of Maine. I mean, this is a, it's a groundswell in Maine, have all, uh, sent letters to Senator Collins asking her to please support community broadband in Maine. So that's been our big push recently, and I think our local papers will start covering this issue as well, so.
Well, I guess we could all write her.
You should, yeah, as individual, um, constituents of hers, because, um.
I write her on lots of things, so. Add that to the list.
Add that to the list.
Well, and this is about competition.
And if you're listening.
This is not about, you know, government handout, this is competition, a free market is what we want, so.
Yeah, you can't outlaw something that's needed in a lot of the rural areas that are way underserved by, by large entities, of which we are down to what, four major cable companies in the country?
Right.
Uh, that just refuse to add services because it's too, they, it's too expensive.
Right, they can't make a profit on that.
But yet, our rates keep going up, so.
Yeah, yeah, so definitely as individuals and people listening, um, I think our, our senators and, uh, representatives need to hear from us on that one. So, that's.
You, you just heard the Parks from Denise. Um, Conservation has not met. Uh, I would ask John to muster up the capital improvement committee for perhaps late September, early October, uh, gathering, and they can take off of the list what had been completed through the bond work and other things, and then create another list, you know?
That's all we do.
And updated lists, I mean, I, you know, there, and, you know, I, I'm surprised. And, and I'm gonna be, I didn't say anything earlier, but, you know, we, we have the West Rockport Fire Station that we were just giving photos of tonight, but that's never been on the list, and that's irritating as hell. I mean, because it is infrastructure, it hasn't been taken care of, and I'm not blaming Jason, but that didn't happen overnight. So, don't mind buying something shiny and new, but let's take care of what we got, you know? So, yeah, if we can get those guys back together.
Yep.
And, uh, anyway, that's it.
All right. Eric, anything?
No, we haven't, uh, had any meetings yet. I was just thinking that, I'm not sure if they've put the schedule together yet. It's quite a challenge getting the RES to.
Yeah.
Get it scheduled that it fits everybody's time, so.
That's a, that's another thing that I think we should help along, because, I mean, you know, and I said to Jonathan, I said, you know, there are no unicorns, and the rainbows come few and far between. So we need to, we need to start thinking more proactively about the property, instead of wishing that something comes along that would be perfect, you know?
I've given my thoughts, so.
Yeah, no, and that's, I, I just, I'd like to, you know, because it's been, what, a couple of years for the committee, I think?
Yeah.
We could use some tax revenue for that.
We absolutely could.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll share my thoughts if it's allowed, but I don't know.
My, hey.
What do you?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think personally, we should look at just, and this is my personal opinion. So, I think we should just look at selling the property as it is, taking some of the money, rebuild, taking whatever it's valued at, move some of the money, rebuild out the Marge Jones Fields, take that other ball field and either move it there or to some other small properties so that everybody still gets their ball fields. Take that, as soon as you sell it, it becomes taxable income. The town still maintains control over what goes there, because we still have ordinance building, Select Board approval and everything, and we could put covenants in the sale as to what's going to be allowed there and how much cons- how much could be allowed. And I think that's come up in the past, but I don't know where that stood, so.
And I think that's where I was headed, because I think, you know, we'll still be talking about this for some years to come.
Right.
I mean, there, there are some proposals that are before the group now. And there have been before, but they've never seemed to make it us.
Well, and the big bugaboo, isn't it, that what developer wants to take on development costs that are then gonna have to go to a town meeting?
Right, and I, and I think.
Right.
Just can't take that risk.
Right, and we would still have full say over what ends up there, it's just, we eliminate that.
Right, that uncertainty.
Right, we can say, this is the property, this is what we kind of expect to be there.
Mm-hmm.
Take that money that we get, we could use whatever monies we need to fix up the parks, put the ADA equipment in, we get all of those little piddly things out of our life, and clear them up now, so they're not capital improvements and all this money that comes down. We take that extra money, we can use it to offset for the roadwork construction, because we're still a four hundred thousand dollars short on roads every year, which is insane. And we're gonna be stuck getting another bond if we don't solve the problem. We could take the money from that and do that, it becomes taxable property now. As soon as it's sold, whoever buys it has to start paying property tax. As soon as there's buildings on there, it goes up. And if we wait for, we go through this whole process with the development and on and on and on, it's gonna take five years. I mean, I'd like to say yesterday, but it's gonna be at least five years, and we need the revenue now.
Yeah. Yeah, and you could put terms and conditions in place, so they couldn't just leave it for ten years, but.
Up front, it still has to go to ordinance review, which we can decide on as it comes up. And we've kind of already said, well, look at that, and it could, still has to go to building and planning, and everything else still has to take place, so it's not like somebody can come in and just drop a giant department store in there, obviously. I mean, that's not what we're looking for.
Right, and the flip side is, you wouldn't want it to just sit vacant, you know, some developer on speculation, hold on to it for ten years.
Right, and, but I think you could say, we're selling this with the anticipation that within two and a half to three years, some development is happening on that property.
Right.
And in the meantime, they're paying taxes on whatever.
And we're, and we're not.
And we don't have to sit here and talk about it.
About trying to get, trying to get a meeting together, talk about it.
And form a new committee or any.
The RES has a pretty good general consensus as to what's going on. But again, we run in, well, what's the town willing to put up? Well, how much money is the town gonna have to put up to get somebody to draw up the designs? And then we go through all of this, and we go through all the planning and all the town meetings and everything else. It's, y- you're never gonna get a consensus in the town, generally speaking.
Right.
As to what should be there, library. We're done with that.
I didn't say that.
You didn't say that, Mark.
I know.
Turn that mic off.
All right, any other updates? Uh, for me, the comprehensive plan's gonna be this week. Um, Megan, the Investment Committee, that meeting, I think, is gonna be moved to next, to the twenty-first. Okay, um, so Planning Board is running on their own, they do great, thank you, Joe, and, uh, they reach out when they need anything, so that's it for me. Anything else? How about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I moved the board to adjourn the meeting.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you very much, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, bro.